Please call the roll.
Counselor Olson. Counselor Finacy. Counselor Bender is excused tonight and he wanted me to read into the record that he is in Guatemala on a rotary mission that has been planned and paid for since 2013. Counselor Sweeney. Counselor McDonald.
Here.
Counselor Missolia. Counselor Finsland.
Here.
Counselor Herrick.
Here.
Counselor McKenzie.
Here.
And Counselor Novak.
Here.
I'll ask for consideration and approval of the minutes of the meeting on March 4th, regular council meeting. Vered a motion at second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Before we begin with the consent agenda item, I would recommend that we move item nine and 10.1 in front of item 8.1, so all of the city business is completed prior to the animal shelter discussion.
I'll second it.
Vered a motion at second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Item number six is the consent agenda.
Vered a motion at second to approve. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item 7.1, Planning Director Cirque is recommending approval of the Town of Parkland's request to purchase 1.85 credits from the City of Superior's compensatory wet land mitigation bank.
Vered a motion at second, discussion?
Hold on one second. Terry? This should have been referred. Sorry.
Refer to where?
Public Works. Apologies.
Change the motion. Second is admissible. We refer to Public Works.
Vered a motion at second for referral. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Item 7.2, Public Director Getzmann is recommending approval of the fixed base operators agreement with Skydive Superior LLC, Gary Androski, through December 31st, 2014.
Vered a motion at second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Okay. Item nine is business by counselors. August Kadat would like to give a brief presentation.
Counselor Kadat.
Hello. Mike and I both went down with the Superior Days youth to talk to representatives about issues that the Superior Days group brought down. And I'd like to just say that when we went down there, all the representatives and staffers we talked to were very open to the ideas we were talking about, and I think they all knew exactly where we were coming from on most of the issues. And it was a great experience and I'm glad we got to go.
Thank you. Item 10.1. Terry? Terry, you're gonna have to excuse yourself at this time.
And if you're wondering why one of our counselors is leaving the room, this agenda item concerns a possible acquisition resolution of a matter concerning his own private property. Past practice has not only suggested that when counselors have some personal stake in the outcome of an agenda item, that they not participate in the debate, obviously the vote too, that they actually physically remove themselves from the room so as to entirely remove the possibility of them having any influence on an agenda item like this.
Item 10.1 is a resolution approving the cooperation agreement with the redevelopment authority of the City of Superior and the report of the redevelopment authority of the City of Superior regarding the development agreement with Superior Partners LLC and the Superior Housing Authority.
What is the pleasure?
Move for approval.
Vered a motion at second to approve, discussion? Hearing seen none, all in favor, signify. I'm sorry. Counselor McKenzie.
Was Mr. Tofti here to talk about this, to explain a little bit more detail of what this is all about, for people who don't know?
Counselor Tofti?
Mayor Hagan, members of the board. My name is Bob Tofti. I'm the attorney that represents the redevelopment authority in their development projects. This project centers on the development of the Grand Central Plaza, which is a 50-unit multifamily residential facility for persons 55 years and older. This has been presented to you in the past with regard to use of tax credits and community development block grant funds to help assist in the development of the project. The development agreement provides for the sale of land, which is in the Blaine Central redevelopment district near the Blaine Central office complex. The proposal is to sell the land by the redevelopment authority to the entity that will be creating this project. The entity consists of Gerard Companies and their limited liability company, as well as the Superior Housing Authority, which will be the operational manager for the facility. There will be, and it isn't presented to you tonight, a grant agreement to the Superior Housing Authority in an aggregate amount of $800,000. One portion of the grant was approved in your October meeting for $558,973 out of the current allocation of community development block grant funds, and you'll be considering next summer an additional grant for $241,000 to help assist this project. One of the parcels of land, the sole parcel of land that is not owned by the redevelopment authority, is owned by Councilor Missolia, and the cooperation agreement provides the funds for that acquisition of that parcel. The redevelopment authority has negotiated a purchase agreement, as well as the developer has provided some additional resources to make that purchase and moving work with the schedule for the projects. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have on the project.
That was great, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Tofti. I want to also thank Director Cirque, Wida, the Gerard Corporation, Councilor Missolia, and others that have been involved in this. It's gonna be a very beautiful structure. We saw schematics of it today, and it'll house many senior citizens in very updated apartments. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
I think we'll go get Terry back. I'll wait till he's seated. Item 8.1, Mayor Hagan is requesting the city council authorize city administration to pursue contract negotiations with the City of Duluth for animal care services for the City of Superior stray dogs and cats.
Thank you, Terry. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, I think. I'd like to do a little presentation to set the facts correct on what I believe to be extremely dangerous.
We're gonna be in the dark here in a minute.
What I and others believe to be very extremely dangerous comments that are being passed around, especially on the social media network, that are rumors or lacking fact, almost to the point of being slanderous against myself, some members of my staff, and some council members. It's pretty disgusting. I don't think it serves anybody very well at all. People lack the fact of trying to seek information. I've literally reached out to some of you, didn't get a call, not a call, not a reply. So the rumor mill will run rapidly, and I think it's pretty sickening, it's childish. So I want to set the facts straight with regard to what people seem to believe is the truth when it really isn't. This one's new to me.
Here, come here, Tom.
The animal shelter issue's been going on for better for more than six years, long before I arrived here and long before many counselors have arrived here. It's been an arduous, long, ugly road. There have been too many players and cooks in the kitchen, if you will. Ideas ran rampant and solutions ran shallow. And I'd like to put out some facts here, that if you want to question me or challenge me on them, you're welcome to do so. Right here, we have city council and common, city and common council facts. I'm gonna present the facts. If you want to challenge them, I'd welcome you to do so. In August of 2011, August 2nd, I presented to the city council a capital improvement project budget. It's a CIP budget that is separate from the operating budget, and it's evolving, rolling budget generally over six or seven years. That particular budget has within it capital improvement programs for buying streets, paving streets, to squad cars to major facilities such as an animal shelter. The CIP included $2.6 million for the animal shelter, which we bonded for, and I'll get to that. The council referred the CIP to the committee of the whole. On August 16th, 2011, Finance Director Vito submitted the 2012 to 2017 capital improvement project, program I should say, for the budget for the council consideration. The common council committee of the whole adopted the CIP with the animal shelter funding within it. September 6th, 2011, common council approved CIP with animal shelter funding within it. November 1, 2011, resolution adopted for issuance, sale, and delivery of $2.655 million in general obligation promissory notes. This is common practice. We issue bonds regularly, we'll be bonding again this year for other types of projects and improvements. September 18th, 2012, in a closed meeting of the common council, a motion and adoption to build a 6,300 square foot animal shelter for an estimated $2.3 million was voted unanimously within the council closed session. Action, this action was a result of the failure in negotiations with the county to participate in a countywide shelter. I want to stop here. There's a lot, there's a large spans of time between the discussion of building an animal shelter and today, in fact, between this particular date and mid-2013, because it wasn't good enough. Building a city animal shelter was not good enough. And many of people in this room participated in that discussion or many discussions. Wasn't good enough because we weren't going to pay for an entire county shelter. I would not, and I still will not, charge tax, the City of Superior taxpayers for product delivery services that are not within their boundaries. We refused, and rightly so, to build a countywide shelter because after negotiations, discussions, and a lot of argument with the townships, villages of the county, they wanted to pay nothing. They wanted to pay nothing. So I ask you, should the city taxpayers be charged for services rendered to population and people outside the corporate boundaries of this city when they want to pay nothing for it? The answer to me is no. The towns and villages began meetings with the city, pursuing and issuing pressure, I will, upon all of us to provide those services for free. Not one single county, town, or village was willing or interested in providing funding for support of a countywide shelter. October 2, 2012, motion and adoption by the common council to hold animal shelter discussions in committee to review the size and support funding from Douglas County to towns and villages and capital program. Motion and adoption was approved and updated the 2013 to 2017 capital improvement program budget. October 2, the common council adopted transfer of funds from the animal shelter project to other projects within the adopted CIP. Why? Because we weren't going to build a countywide project. The CIP adopted changes reduced the animal shelter project to 2.3 million, which would satisfy the 6,300 square foot shelter that was adopted by the common council to be constructed in closed session. The current balance in the animal shelter fund is a little less than 2.2 million. Why? City Finance Director didn't pilfer it. I didn't misappropriate, as some suggest on your little website, as some suggest on the website, that we've been cheating and pilfering money. No. The record shows that money was spent on engineering and architectural services to the point that it is now. April 16th, 2013, motion and adoption to approve the Bear Creek Park site for an animal shelter. And that was going to be a 6,300 square foot animal shelter for the people of Superior, not the county. Motion and adoption to amend original bear approval of Bear Creek site for animal shelter contingent upon no reduction in park amenities. It's a 13-acre site, could take about two and a half acres. Note, the element of time between October 2 and 2012 and April 16th to 2013, which I call the gap, those were county negotiations with county, towns, and villages. So when we talk about the gap in timing of creating, constructing this particular shelter, a lot of the time period that you see that's not represented here between these dates was a lot of time by a lot of people, including myself, to negotiate with appropriate parties that wanted a countywide shelter that never moved off base one. I sent to the common council, asked for adoption of recommendations of the following, and apparently none of you have read that either. Number one, commit to architectural engineering design for a shelter. Number two, provide for site preparation of Bear Creek Park. Number three, engage animal allies in a capital campaign program to close the gap between what the city has available to build a city shelter and what other people wanted as a countywide shelter, to provide the funding to close the gap to build a larger shelter. Animal allies engaged in that capital campaign. Number four, engage in gap funding for countywide shelter, i.e. the capital campaign. Number five, issue invitations to bid, which to be in spring of 2014, for a countywide shelter if the capital campaign was successful. Six, determine the gap of construction and operation costs. When I say that, the gap of construction, when the bids come in versus the money that's available through what we have, the 2.2 million, and the gap of raising the capital campaign funds. And the last part of that, when you see operational cost, not too many people wanted to talk about operational costs. Build it, it's gonna be fine. Yes. I'm not, I'm not taking any questions right now, I'm gonna get through this. I'm sorry, I missed. Okay, what?
The building for the Bear Creek site was actually, it was either 83 or 8600 square feet. I worked on that floor plan, that was not the 6,300 square foot.
No, I'm sorry, you're correct. It was gonna be 8,600 square foot to accommodate the countywide shelter. Thank you. Operation costs, nobody seems to want to talk about that. Open the door and it really doesn't cost anything to operate that. By animal allies calculations, it'll be $317,000 in the first year of operation to operate it. Where's that coming from? Where's that coming from? We budgeted $160,000. The rest has to come from someplace else, if we're going to have a countywide shelter. Once again, we're not gonna pay for the operation costs for a project that's one-third larger than is necessary for the City of Superior of a city taxpayer at all. Seven, negotiate final contract with animal allies to manage and operate the new shelter. That was adopted by the common council and December 17th, 2013. Motion and adoption by council to suspend the animal arts design contract. Why did we do that? Why would we suspend a contract to design a shelter? The money wasn't there. The gap never got filled. The gap never got filled. The capital campaign fell flat on its face, it wasn't going anywhere. January 15th, 2014, we, I should say, on December 17th, Animal Allies was kind enough to come here and tell us that it didn't look good. January 15th, 2014, my office was in receipt of a letter from Animal Allies that terminated the current shelter contract to serve as the shelter manager for what we have, and to terminate the interest in any new shelter operations. Why would they do that? They made a good business decision. They made a very good business decision. The operation of the existing shelter, for a nonprofit or for profit, the expenses have to be lower than the revenue. Otherwise, nothing works. Why did they terminate the interest in the new shelter operations? Because in the, from the very first conversation we had with Animal Allies, they stated and continue to state, and we worked with them, to provide a countywide shelter because once again, it's a matter of cost versus revenue. If the revenue's not coming in and the costs are higher, it doesn't work. I'll go right back to the operational costs. What are the operational costs necessary to survive? If you can't do that, you're wasting everybody's money, and your money, taxpayers' money. So they made a wise business decision, in my opinion. They didn't see it working either, and they're a very professionally-run, very stellar organization. I'm recommending tonight the following. Authorize the administration, i.e. me and this finance director, to negotiate with the Humane Society of Douglas County to operate the existing shelter on an interim basis. The contract, why are we sitting here tonight? Our contract expires on April 30th. May 1, the door's locked unless we have a solution. We were given 90-day notice, it's not unfair, we have to have a solution. The solution I'm recommending is number one. Number two, authorize contract for animal shelter design bid. Contract from this date, I mean, the design, I should say, should be prepared for bid within three months. Number three, place the shelter out to bid, no later than July. And number four, negotiate for operations and management of the new shelter. This isn't a good business decision, by the way. Government's not supposed to make good business decisions, and this is one of them. I'm afraid that you're gonna find his council or future councils and future mayor coming and saying, you know, we need a little more money because it just isn't working. But I'm capitulating to the power of the passion and the anger of the people to not make a good business decision. And I'll ask the common council for their vote on that. And what I'm trying to say is that if you spend more money than you make, where are you gonna go? I believe, I believe I'll be proven correct in a matter of 10 years. The well's gonna run dry and they're gonna be looking for more money to operate this. Not a good business decision, but I'll capitulate. Thank you. I'll open it up for the common council, and after that, the public. Counselor McKenzie.
Yeah, Mayor, thanks for that explanation there. Just some questions, I think maybe some other people might have too, is what size, what size building are you talking about? What site are we talking about? First, that would be my first two questions.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Counselor, and I also appreciate all the work you've done this.
Thank you.
That's not for me to say, I don't have any, I don't have any skills or ability to tell you how large it should be, nor do I care where it's located, so.
Okay.
But if it's 63, if it's what, 45, whatever, I'll let that determination be handled by people that are better known than I myself.
And then the conversation that we've had recently, we talked about some things about how this would all come about. City would provide the property, city would provide the building, and then we would find the operators to operate it, and then they would have to pay the operating expenses, is that correct? What are your thoughts there?
It's a good question, very good question. Unlike any other operation that we've had, we would pay for the services rendered to the City of Superior. Don't want to put a dollar value on it, but depending on the size, once again, the quick calculation, Animal Allies estimated an 8,600 square foot building would cost about $317, $320,000 a year. So if we're looking at, for example, if we were looking at two-thirds that size to serve, depending on what people believe the size needs to be, let's say it's two-thirds, it'll be $200,000 a year. You know, cut the, cut the, cut the baby in thirds, and then add two, or times two. So it'd be a couple hundred thousand dollars a year for, you know, if it were 6,300, who knows what it's going to be? So, and as, as it is with other shelters, Animal Allies, the Humane Society, they spend a significant amount of time fundraising and bequests, donations, and services rendered revenues. So that mixture would have to be there in order for it to succeed. But I'm all for proposing to the common council the right amount of money that would take to operate a shelter so that they would not have to spend every waking hour and moment searching for the next dollar. searching for the next dollar.
And you're proposing, I'm not sure, city, city only you're talking?
That's another good question, councillor. As you know, as you've heard me say, I do not believe in government-only buildings. I think we don't know how to manage buildings, we don't know how to maintain them, i.e. the animal shelter. I just don't believe in government-only buildings, it's, should be on the tax rolls. But in this case, we may have to own it and lease it out. I don't know.
Okay. And then one other question, and somebody else has got questions, but I've had a lot of them, but you mentioned Humane Society, Douglas County Humane Society operating, I've heard some other things, possibly ARF re-establishing. I've also heard, heard Critter Harbor. Both of them are willing to do a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Are those things that we need to, you would be open to as well?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McKenzie? Or Councillor McDonald, I'm sorry.
I would just like to propose that we go with this program and see where it goes from there. I think there's a lot of good people who are willing to work on this, and I don't see how we could go wrong. Thank you.
Well.
Let's make the motion.
I heard there was a second, I didn't see who made the second. I'm sorry.
My, I guess my question is, what do we do with the, with what's on the agenda on the floor? What do we do with that?
City Attorney?
Obviously, the agenda contemplates seeking your blessing to ink a deal with the city of Duluth for animal sheltering services. To modify that and to align it with what the recommendation is before you now, I would simply recommend that you bring a motion to amend the business item to reflect not the city of Duluth, but the Humane Society of Douglas County instead.
So in essence, we're eliminating what, what is on 8.1 at this point. We're eliminating any negotiations with the city of Duluth animal shelter. Pound.
You're modifying the agenda item to reflect the Humane Society of Douglas County, I'm guessing, if you like the recommendation, instead of the city of Duluth.
Yeah, well, that, that would be my motion to, would be with Superior, Superior, not Duluth.
And I'll second that.
The motion that's second, discussion by the council?
No. What you're about to vote on is simply to amend it. So when you vote on what you're about to vote on, you're not approving the matter that's before you.
Okay.
But you're approving amending it so that the wording reflects negotiating a contract with the Humane Society of Douglas County.
And then, and then amending it with the, with the explanation as, as the mayor has just stated.
Well, whatever, whatever you seek to add to the motion item, I couldn't, I couldn't say, or I couldn't summarize, but yeah.
Well, Mayor, could you, could you repeat that? What, what you'd like to be part of this? I can't remember everything you said.
Pretty much what you see right there, the number one and number, number one and number two. I'm looking for authorization, first of all, looking for authorization to negotiate with the Humane Society of Douglas County for purposes of managing and operating the existing shelter for the interim period. When I say interim, it could be until the new facility opens, of course. And then we would bulldoze the existing facility.
Okay.
And then the second one is to authorize moving forward with the contract for animal shelter design that would come back to the common council for approval.
Well, I'll make that amended a motion then, as you just, as you just stated, and as it's written up here.
I thought I already did that, but I'll second it.
Well, I just, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion by Councillor McKenzie, seconded by Councillor McDonald.
Could, could we have people speak?
Councillor, Councillor Olson.
So, yeah, it's on. I guess the only thing that I would like to see, if we are amending the, the motion to continue, or to negotiate with the city of Duluth and insert that we are gonna be negotiating with the Douglas County Humane Society, I would ask the motioners that they include item number three as well, to include the building.
We're not, we're not gonna include 2700.
No, he said the building.
To, to include, number, you're gonna authorize number one, you're gonna authorize number two, to get into a contract for animal shelter design, that's to design the building on a three-month period, and then number three should be included as well to place the shelter out for bid. Does that make sense?
Yes.
The motion maker?
Well, with all the respect, I guess I don't understand how you get to the place where you're putting the shelter out to bid before you've had a chance to review the design.
Right.
Or to appreciate even ballpark what the cost of that shelter will be. I mean, maybe I'm missing something, but I don't see how you could feel comfortable procedurally or logically with, with that folded into it. I think it's obvious that you, you're directing, or you're contemplating directing the, the design of a, of a shelter, but how you can direct the placing that, the construction of that shelter out to bid ahead of even seeing the design work and the estimated costs, I, I don't think that would be.
I think it should be.
That would be unprecedented, in my experience, let me just put it that way.
Okay, the only reason I'm bringing that up is because the recommendation by Mayor Hagan for adoption by the common council includes all four items as listed on the PowerPoint.
It's well taken. The, the reason I put it on there, and you'll see some perspective timelines, what I'm hoping to do by putting that in there is, is this. So we don't get off track like we've been for too long, nobody's fault. So we target accomplishments so that we're on track to hopefully put this thing out for bid in, by July. Councillor Sweeney?
I would just like to go back if I could, before the bidding. What, do you have any knowledge of why Animal Allies went into their decision-making to determine that this wasn't a viable option? Was it the fundraising, or was it the operational costs? And if it was both, and the operational cost, if you know, what, what did they see? What trends did they see that caused them to lose confidence in having to, and to downsize, if you would?
I can only say what I believe. Tim Riley is here, the chair of the board for Animal Allies, he can speak to it better than I, but as I set up when I was before the podium, the beginning discussions and ensuing discussions were to the effect that Animal Allies was interested in a countywide, larger shelter for economy of management. And that wasn't forthcoming with the failure, with lack of progress, I should say, on the capital campaign program, and also with regard to moving back and forth between the 6300, 8600, or vice versa. Mr. Riley, do you want to speak to that?
My name is Tim Riley, I'm the present board chair for Animal Allies in, in Duluth. I did hear what Mayor Hagan outlined as the rationale for the decision from Animal Allies to temporarily pull back out of that agreement. And what he said, I have no objection to, it was a business decision. However, it was much more than that, in my opinion, and I would like to state that too for you here tonight. The decision was primarily based on the fact that over that six-year period, from the time that that decision of the new shelter was reached to proceed, the design process, the back and forth between all the different parties, the initial, original design concept had changed so dramatically over that six-year period that our board agreed that we should step back, at least temporarily, to get more clarity over in Superior as to what your local community and politicians wanted to do. And the reason for our decision was, one, to protect our own interests, I can say that in a selfish way, that we're looking out for Animal Allies, but also to allow the different entities over here in Superior, Wisconsin, to, to be in charge of that decision on what you want. And so while it was a business decision, well thought out, the primary reason for doing it was that the initial design had changed dramatically, and the future was so unknown, we just asked to be relieved of that responsibility to participate. Now, the operation of the existing shelter in Superior was initially agreed to as a stopgap measure to help that facility and the employees and the animals there temporarily until the new shelter was up and opened and running. And when it became clear to our organization that the progress towards building a new shelter had been suspended, and a period of time was going to go by before another decision was made, we exercised our 90-day window to notify Superior that we wanted to be relieved of that responsibility. That was the hardest part for us, honestly, to step away from that, working with the existing shelter in Superior. Mayor Hagan, anything else you'd like to comment?
Thank you so much. Unless the council has questions of you. Councillor Fantasy?
Yeah, I don't have any questions, Tim, but I just wanna, wanna say, I'm glad we're going in this direction. Thank you, Mayor, for, for bringing this forward. I wanna thank everybody that's shown up here, I know that we've all received a lot of phone calls. This ability has not been, it's not been the best at times, but it definitely shows that it's a very emotional, passionate thing that, that the people of this community wanna, wanna get finalized, and I think we're heading in the right direction. My goal tonight was, one, is let's, let's work on something to get the animals taken care of starting May 1st, and, and looks like we're heading that way. The second one was to, let's continue pursuing the shelter. My biggest question, and I think you kind of alluded to, Mayor, was, once we vote on this, where does that responsibility lay now to make sure, to assure that that shelter moves forward? I don't wanna see what's kind of happened in the past, that it just kind of lays there and gets put on somebody else's plate where it really shouldn't be put on. And so I just wanted, when we leave the council chambers here tonight, I wanna be assured that, that there's a group, or the administration, or somebody's gonna take this and start moving forward with it, and organizing it so we do have the right voices at the table.
Well-placed questions. First order of business is to negotiate the continuance of the, the existing shelter to be open on May 1, which I think is, is achievable on short notice. I put two weeks there, and hopefully that can be completed within two weeks as far as an agreement. The second one, and I think the one that you're referring to mostly, is the design. I'm gonna be working with Public Works and the city attorney's office and finance with regard to that particular, and contract analyst office to work on a posting for bid on that particular shelter. The issue here is, what are they gonna design? And I think that's gonna take probably a discussion of looking at perhaps the schematics that have been presented in relationship to what we believe it needs to be in the structure. One example being that depending on where the shelter is or was going to be located, do we need a community room? Do we need a community room in that shelter? Took up a considerable amount of space. So those things, I think, we all need to look at, and certainly any council member that is interested in partaking in that discussion is very welcome. So we need to decide, what is it we're putting out for bid as to the, the facility features and size? Any further current discussion by the council? If not, I'll open it to the public. City Clerk?
There is a handful of you signed up. If you choose, if you've signed up and don't wanna speak, that's fine, too. Christine, I'm sorry, I can't read the letters.
I'm sorry, who's?
Okay, who's? When you come up, would you please state your name and address for the record? Thank you.
And as, and as our first speaker makes her way to the podium, let me just remind the audience, a lot of you probably don't come to these meetings as a matter of practice. We typically try to restrict comments to three minutes. If you feel like you need more time than that, you can certainly ask the, the council to suspend its own rules. But obviously, a lot of names to get through tonight. I can't imagine everyone here is here to speak, but a good number seem to be. So I'll, what I'll try to do to be as inconspicuous as possible, to not interrupt you, is just hit this light at the three-minute mark, and maybe that'll cue you that you're close to out of time. Thanks.
Sounds good. Yeah, my name is Christine Pous, and I'm, I'm actually, I live in South Range. I lived in Superior for several years and volunteered for ARF. And I just wanna say thank you. Thank you for all the time and energy and frustration, and I'm sorry that people have been disrespectful and unkind. And I think an animal shelter is worth paying for. It's worth the taxpayers' dollars. I wish I, I was still in Superior and could contribute, because I would. And I will encourage, if the county, if you still want negotiation with, with the town of Parkland, which I live in, I would be happy to talk to people, all the representatives locally, to encourage them. I don't know if that is still on the table, or something you're interested in pursuing anymore, but I just, I just wanna say that I'd be willing to go to my representatives as well. And so thank you for all your time and effort and hard work into this. I'm so glad that we are still committed to this animal shelter. It is definitely needed. So, thank you.
Bonnie Wolden?
Thank you, Mayor Hagan, and also council members. My name is Bonnie Wolden, I live at 4012 Belknap Street. Nick McKenzie is my councillor representative. I wanted to say that I am in favor of the city building a new animal shelter. I believe that it's the duty of a caring community to also care for its animals. Conditions at the current shelter, while they have improved since Animal Allies has come into the shelter, are still not adequate to support the needs of the animals, nor are they adequate for the people who volunteer or who work at that shelter, and I would like to see that addressed. And I think that this is, this new recommendation is a good working recommendation to address that concern. I'm saddened at the frustration that councillors have had regarding this whole issue, and hope that it will move forward quickly now, especially since there is a timeline that has been posted, so, so that that can take place. I do have some questions. One is, do adoption costs go toward offsetting the cost of the operation of a shelter? If so, that could help with the initial or the annual operating costs. That plus fundraising, assuming that the community will come together to form a committee or a group that is in support of the shelter and will do that fundraising that's necessary to support the shelter. If the Humane Society does not accept the, the charge that you have in, number one, to care for the existing shelter on an interim basis, what is the backup plan? And, and also, will the animals still be housed at the existing shelter, or are they, would the Humane Society of Douglas County be sheltering those animals between the time of May 1st and when the new shelter is ready for the city's animals?
Good questions. Good questions. The revenue, of course, would go to the shelter to offset operational costs, revenue from adoptions, et cetera, services. That's part of the equation of the, the revenue stream. We have not, the discussions I've had with Michelle Porter, president of the Humane Society, has been over a couple days, today, weekend, I think. And so they met tonight to, for their regular meeting, I believe, to discuss this very issue. I have not heard back, I'm sure that I will, she's sitting right here, actually. So to answer the question about the facilities, the shelters, I'm assuming that we would have the full operation of both shelters in the interim, so that the city shelter would be available and staffed in accordance with our payment. be available and staffed in accordance with our payment for services. You had one more question. I'm sorry.
It was in regard to where would animals be housed on an interim basis between May 1st and whenever the new shelter is constructed?
In the existing shelter.
Okay. Thank you. I also wanted to say that I'm very sorry if you and other councilor members have been offended by the, by members of the community who are concerned about this whole process. And I'd also like to say that, that I, as a community member, am very interested in working together with council members or whoever the committees are that are going to be working on this process, as probably other members here in the, in the audience are. And so, you know, I didn't really have a lot of knowledge or information about this whole process that was going on, except for reading about what was happening in the newspaper. And I would like to be more personally involved and have more personal information about the whole process and some of the struggles that the city has had in getting this program off the ground. And there are probably other people here, too, who feel that same way, so.
I think any one of us would be pleased to have a cup of coffee and dig deeper in the conversation.
Great, thanks.
Rita Kiefer?
My name is Rita Kiefer. Does this work? Turn that off. Okay. I'm Rita Kiefer. I live at 2818 Hewitt. Born and raised here, gone 30 years, and I've returned recently. I also appreciate all the effort you've put into this, all the struggles and everything, and also Animal Allies for their consideration of our community and how we feel about it. I forgot your name already. What Bonnie said, I would also like to be involved in conversations. As far as what you're offering up there, Mayor Hagan, negotiate for operations and management of a new shelter, my opinion, before authorizing contract on the design of the shelter or placing the shelter out for bid. I don't, I'm not necessarily sure it would be called negotiating for operations and management, but the group who was at the library last night discussing this is a very passionate group. We were looking for solutions. There are some possible ideas and solutions that we're looking at, and if we could have the time to work together on those before designing the shelter, because that could change the design of it, obviously, I think that should be placed higher on the list.
I'm sorry, the negotiation part?
Yeah, and I'm not sure it would be negotiation. More like the community getting together to brainstorm, come up with solutions and options. You know, finding out the facts like you gave us tonight. I thank you very much for that, because along with Bonnie, I wasn't aware of a lot of the But I think that would give everybody a better chance to understand what you all have been going through and how we want to approach it, how much effort, you know, citizen contribution would be.
Sure. Just if you can contact us, so we know how to contact you.
Great. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Dr. Amanda Bruce. I live at 1418 East 7th Street. I actually am probably one of the only, if not the only, person in this room who was supportive of the original agenda item tonight. That being said, last night I attended the meeting at the library, which was very good for me, because I was really struck by the passion that our community has. Sorry, I always cry when I get talking about animals and passion about them. But anyway, this community, for whatever reason, has an exceptional desire and passion to have an animal shelter on this side of the bridge. And so I think that this, at the end of the day, is a recommendation, as Mayor Hagan said, that's going to make the most people happy. I'm going to give my caution, though, because that was the speech that I originally had planned for tonight. What do Star of the North Humane Society and Grand Rapids and Hibbing Animal Shelter and Humane Society both have in common? They're both animal shelters in our region that have gone out of business in the last five years, doors closed, unable to keep up with the demands and costs of running a brick-and-mortar facility. A community with positive outcomes for its animals is much more than a nice new building. Better outcomes for animals and reduced numbers of strays and surrendered animals are a result of well-implemented programs. Let me talk for a moment about the Animal Humane Society, the oldest and largest animal welfare organization within Minnesota. They offer clear proof that programs work. In 2011, their annual intake was 35,000 animals a year they took into their facilities. And in 2013, they dropped their annual intake to 22,000 animals a year. How does an organization drop intake by over 30% in two years? I talked to Janelle Dixon, the Animal Humane Society's CEO, last week, and she says it's through managed admissions, offering alternate resources such as behavior classes and consultations and access to low-cost spay and neuter options. We can see that programs work in our community, too. Superior's stray cat intake is down by nearly 40% since the start of programs aimed at the aggressive spay-neuter of cats owned by low-income residents. And across the country, we have seen a dramatic reduction in the number of animals housed in animal shelters. The number of animals needing adoptive services in the twin ports in 2013 equals that of Duluth alone in 2010. And of the 22,000 animals that Animal Humane Society took in during 2013, nearly 6,000 of those animals were transferred in from organizations outside of their service area. I contend that Animal Allies' beautiful Duluth facility has the space and the resources to accommodate all of the animals from the twin ports. And in addition, the Duluth Animal Control Facility has the space to accommodate the number of stray animals coming into both communities. I strongly supported the building of a new facility five years ago, when the face of animal welfare in our community was dramatically different than it is today. But the changes in animal numbers we see in our community are not a fluke, and the city of Superior should not be in the business of owning an animal shelter. As intake continues to drop, the city will be left with an overbelt facility struggling to keep its doors open. I will absolutely echo Mayor Hagan on this. This is a poor, poor business decision. City dollars, okay. That being said, everyone here has the best outcomes of animals in mind, and we just have different paths of getting there. And I will ultimately be supportive of what our community supports, because I, too, have the best interest of animals in mind. Thank you.
Mayor, is it appropriate for me to ask the speaker a question? Or Frog? Dr. Bruce, could you come back to the podium, please? Can I ask you where you got your figures on the Hibbing Animal Shelter being closed?
Yeah, Hibbing Animal Shelter reorganized. I would have to say it was back in 2010. They're now called Range Regional. So they had an organization in there that went out of business, and the city of Hibbing actually contracted with another group to come in and take over programs.
So the facility is actually still open?
The, the facility is under a different management group. So the organization has gone defunct because they were unable to cover the operations of operating a shelter.
But the facility is open?
Yes.
Okay. And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but the mayor of Hibbing works for me. So, and they, they run that facility for about $119,000 a year. Thank you.
Norm Voorhees?
Hello, my name's Norm Voorhees. I'm the president of the Northern Wisconsin Building Trades Council. We're representing approximately 650 men and women in the building and construction trades in northwestern Wisconsin, seven northwest counties here. I'm also a owner of a black lab, about a 90-pounder and a 17-pound tabby. And I can understand how this has been a very difficult issue with looking and listening to the mayor's presentation and the struggles he went through to try to pull in partners within the county and bring everybody to the table and work together. The proposal that's on the, on the board is, again, opening the door to get down to that path. And hopefully, with the outpouring of the passionate people here in the, in the community, everybody can work together and try and move things forward and make this a successful project for the Superior area. And of course, the men and women in the building and construction trades are, have been waiting for a long time to build this shelter, too, because it means not only jobs in the construction industry, but then jobs to run it, which will incur operating costs that resolute, you know, there's going to be a lot of hard work in front of everybody to keep moving forward to make this happen for the city. Thank you.
Dwayne Anderson?
Good evening. I'm Dwayne Anderson from 76 Billings Drive. I would just like to mention that the reason we have passion back here is because we talk about organizations making changes. We went from 40, 50 years ago of no facilities to facilities that had high kill rates to, I want to understand now, virtually zero kill rates in our, in our facilities. We were told that that facility was going to go away, yet all the hard work from what we talked about of organizations, they weren't really organizations. It's the people of those organizations, the directors, the employees, the volunteers, the donation givers. All of those people are the ones that are sitting behind me and are passionate about where we're going. And I want to appreciate what the mayor's doing and want to let him know that I support it 100%, and I think we will find that a vast majority of the people of this city will be very appreciative and supportive of that decision. Thank you.
Pat Mccone?
Pat Mccone, 3115 Hewitt Avenue. I'm a resident of Superior and Douglas County, and, and I'm pleased to see a change in path. I wasn't pleased to take a lecture this evening at all. And I'm sorry that people can't have respectful disagreements. We're judged as human beings, I can tell you straight up, we own a dog and it's not a good business decision. She's expensive. I got her from the shelter. My daughter worked at the shelter. Every paycheck my daughter earned, she went to Dan's Feedbind and she cashed that paycheck and she bought food for the animals. So I am pleased that this decision is being made. I was horrified to think we would outsource our animals to Duluth. I was raised by a single mom in poverty with no car. I thought about, what if my dog, as a child, had run away? We would have no way of getting over that bridge to find that dog. So, you know, not every decision is a business decision. Not every building is a good business decision, and we're in one of those big, ugly decisions right here. So, thank you. Thank you for moving forward. I'll pay more taxes, I'll raise more money, but I also think we are judged as human beings on how we treat the most vulnerable in our communities, and let's do the right thing.
Dan O'Neill?
That's a hard act to follow. My name's Dan O'Neill. I live at 2003 Garfield Avenue. First, I'd like to say thank you to everybody, because everyone out here, well, most of us out here, we changed the history of Superior tonight, so, good for you folks. I come tonight, Bruce, prepared to read an article that we had found from 2008 pertaining to the Duluth shelter. I just want to thank you for changing your mind on this, because that place over there was a deplorable place to put our animals. And this article was written when Animal Allies was breaking away and building, raising funds to build their new shelter. Back then, it was a deplorable place to put animals, so it's five years ago, I'm sure it's even worse. Mayor, you and I have had our differences on this, and I, if I offended you in any way, I'd like to publicly apologize to you. I'd like to work with you, Mayor, in going, getting your new plan going. I love it, it's great, but let's do it, let's get it done. So whatever you need from me, Bruce, I'm here. Thank you.
I have a question from the gentleman from Animal Allies. In your, thank you. In your experience with an operation such as Animal Allies has in Duluth or another area, I'm sure you have more experiences on that, can a shelter break even without grants and donations?
Your question is just on the adoption income alone?
Well, whatever income you have, other than donations and grants, can a shelter break even?
Not the type of shelter that this community wants, no.
Okay. So in order for the Superior Shelter to survive, it's going to have to have donations and/or grants to make it break even. Whoever runs it, right?
I would say that's a high likelihood, yes.
High, okay. Thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Counselor Dalbit?
I would just like to say thank you, Mayor, and thank you, you passionate, caring people out there. Now, let's get this show on the road.
Thank you, Counselor. You have a motion and a second before you on the floor. Counselor Fantasy?
Yeah, one last parting comment, and again, I want to thank everybody. But as we move forward, one is let's take care of the animals for May 1st, let's get the shelter done. But food for thought, as long as we're talking about this, I think what this community needs after this all happens is the construction of a dog park. I've talked to several people about that. I don't want to see it end just with the shelter. I think we need to take it one step farther, but I don't want that to muddy this whole thing at this point, but something to keep on the radar screen as we move forward. And as we move forward, Terry, could you repeat the motion before we vote on it?
Before you do that, Counselor McKenzie?
Mike would like to go first.
Counselor Harris?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for coming out here tonight and showing your support, so thank you for that, and thank you, Mayor.
Counselor McKenzie?
Thank you. Tom, Counselor Fantasy, thank you so much for your support with this. You know, you've always been positive and given this great thought, wherever the shelter goes, whether it's in your district or wherever it's going to be. It's going to be something that we're all going to be proud of. Mayor, thank you so much, I mean, from the bottom of my heart. We've had several discussions, they were, some of them kind of heated, but we seemed to get to where we wanted to go. Thank you for, you know, your positive and objective look at this thing. And I want to thank everybody at City Hall, everybody that's ever called me, sent me emails. Thank you for always being there and with the passion for all, for all these years. And I want to extend my greatest gratitude for all of you out here. It's just been wonderful. It's just been overwhelming, these jobs up here, as most everybody would attest to. And I guess it's, it's proof by, everybody here is running unopposed, and so nobody wants these jobs, but, so they're tough. And I always said that when I first come as a counselor, that there were going to be some really, really tough decisions. But I knew that if I had support or if I got a lot of feedback, overwhelming feedback from the people, even if it was something that I didn't agree with, that I knew that my job or my decision was going to be easy, because I have to vote for what the people want. And I know the people want this, I know how passionate they are about this. I had a lady today, I think she's well into her 80s, and I've had several of these, but this one stood out. She's always loved animals, and she said that she has bequeathed $20,000 to a new shelter here in town. And she said that she's not going to wait until she dies. She says that this- She says if this thing comes to fruition here tonight, that she is going to donate that $20,000 right now, she says, because she would love to see this money spent on something while she's alive. And again, I just, I just know that that's, there's more people out there, they're going to, they're going to come, now that the city has shown this positive thing about going forward and, you know, to, so that we can have something to show for, and again, something that we're going to be proud of. And again, I know that people are going to support this thing, they're going to volunteer, it gives us all a sense of community. And again, thank you a million for being out there and supporting us up here and for supporting this community and this new shelter that's coming.
Counselor, Counselor Finland?
I appreciate all the people and all the phone calls and the emails and everything that we've received, but I'd like to point out that this is not the solution, this is just a beginning, and we're going to have to continue this project and the capital campaign that it's going to require to fund this. I hope this enthusiasm will continue from all you people that are out there, and I hope you all participate in it as much as you have with all your other emails and letters and calls, and just keep it up because we, we're not going to let this just die now. We have to continue this. It's just the beginning now. It's certainly not an end to anything yet, so let's keep it up.
Thank you, Councilor. Any further discussion by the council or the public? If not, with the clerk call, read the, read the motion.
Sure. The first motion is going to be, it was from Counselor McKenzie, seconded by Counselor McDonald, to amend the agenda item to reflect Humane Society of Douglas County rather than the city of Duluth for care and services of the city's animals.
Heard the amended motion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Now you need a motion to approve the amended motion.
I would make the motion or second it.
Heard the motion and second to approve as the recommendation. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. If there's no further business to come before this body, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. For the motion, we stand adjourned.